The proclamation and resolution consent agenda portion of our meeting for Monday, November 15, 2021. First item on the agenda is a resolution by Commissioners Denenberg, Wondell, Fritz, and Creasy honoring Mr. Leo York.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you Mayor Frank and my esteemed Commissioners. Always good to see you and be here, especially when we're going to recognize someone in our community. I've had the pleasure of getting to know Leo over the years, and I've learned a lot from him. One of the most important things I think I've learned is he has a sense of control about his character, his passion. I've never really seen him get mad. I know he can, but he holds himself very well and presents himself very well. So without further ado, I also want to say before I get started, I mentioned this to Leo earlier today. This was brought to the attention of myself and Commissioner Fritz. Commissioner Fritz, Commissioner Denenberg, and Commissioner Creasy approached us and asked if it would be appropriate. Of course, Commissioner Fritz and myself said absolutely, and I just want to thank you two for bringing it to our attention. It's an honor. So, Anderson County Tennessee Board of Commissioners, Resolution Number 21-11-903. Resolution honoring Leo York, community volunteer and social justice crusader. Whereas Leo is a well-known county historian and Claxton resident who believes in the inherent human dignity and worth of all people of this earth and has devoted his entire life to the respect, care, and compassion of his fellow man. And whereas, as a young 10-year-old boy growing up in the Claxton community, Leo experienced a life-altering moment when he witnessed the reinternment of dozens of slaves and family members moved to the new Black Family Cemetery from the property we now know as the Buller Run Fossil Plant. And whereas, this moment of time affected his life immensely, and he began to question why some people were treated differently in society simply because of their skin color. As a young elementary school student, he curiously asked his teacher why the black children from the Gatsin Town community were not allowed to attend Claxton Elementary, but forced to go to the all-black green McAdoo School in Clinton. And whereas, the answer to his question was unacceptable, and his concerns continued when his black friends were not allowed to attend Clinton High School but were sent to Austin East High School in Knoxville. And whereas, these unfortunate incidents shaped Leo's life forever, as evidenced in his continued concerns for social justice reform and his devotion to the care of his fellow man. He furthered his desire to help others by attending nursing school on a scholarship at East Tennessee Baptist School of Nursing and spent his entire professional career as a registered nurse in the intensive care units at Baptist Hospital and UT Medical Hospital. And whereas, after retirement, he set out on a mission to preserve Anderson County history by serving in the Sons of the Revolutionary Society and volunteering his time and effort to the perpetual care of all intern in the Black Family Cemetery and the Anderson County Poor Farm. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Anderson County Board of Commissioners, meeting in the regular session this 15th day, November 2021, we honor this kind and beloved man of the Claxton community who has dedicated his life to the sick, injured, and less fortunate in our society, and who believes that no man should be judged or treated differently because of their skin color. Be it further resolved, that we proclaim November 20th, 2021, as Leo York Day in Anderson County, and hope that all Anderson County citizens will remember the inherent human dignity of their fellow man and recognize all human beings as a special value intrinsic to humanity, and that depends equal respects, that demands equal respect and treatment for all members of our community, no matter the color of their skin or status in society. Resolve duly passed and effective this 15th day of November 2021, signed by Chairman Josh Anderson, Mayor Terry Frank, and Jeff Cole, County Clerk. Thank you, brother.
Leo, you're more than welcome to say a few words if you'd like.
Actually, I'm just, I'm a little too humbled right now to speak at all, other than to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a presentation to EMS and the Sheriff's Department by VFW Post 12051.
Thank you, Chairman, for your time tonight. This is my first time doing this. First time I'm in front of a crowd, so I'm a little bit nervous. Prove here at eight years has graciously handed over the mic to me, but I want to say, first of all, it's an honor to be here. Each year, on his side, on the post-VFW side, they select an EMT, a firefighter, and a law enforcement officer for an award. It starts at local. From here, they will move to state. They win at state, they go to national. So tonight, we're here to recognize two people. I think one of them has kind of caught on already. Not real sure. The first award tonight goes to a man who is so diverse. He is currently with the U.S. National Guard, Army National Guard. He is shift commander and paramedic with ACMS, and a firefighter with Oliver Springs Fire Department. Goes unknown by Devon. He continually demonstrates his dedication to the art and science of helping people in their time of dire need. He pushes his team to learn and do more, just as he does himself. He runs his shift with minimal disruption, as much as possible, and always looks out for his team's safety. At this time, it is our honor to present the award to Devon Gillum for First Responder of the Year. And their certificate says, "In special recognition of exemplary service to humanity by administering emergency medical assistance." So not only does he get a nice little certificate, he is awarded $125 as well. Your next point is to the state level, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much.
The next one goes to the Law Officer of the Year. This guy has spent 42 years in law enforcement. He come to us graciously from Knox County, I'll be happy to steal that one, where he had attained the rank of captain. He has received many accommodations while he was there. Emergency child delivery, apprehension of a bank suspect, reducing auto burglaries and panhandling for the proposal of Pet Safe Village, also in the Central Business District of Knoxville, and also in Knoxville for crime analysis and mapping development. Here in Anderson County, he has been awarded the Sheriff's Award for exemplary service. He is instrumental in getting Anderson County Sheriff's Office in the flock license plate reader and has made ACSo a key part of the National Network of Sharing Information. It is our honor at this time to present Law Enforcement Officer of the Year to Detective Robert Hubs. And this certificate says, "In graceful recognition of and denyingly adherence to the hard ideals of law enforcement in maintaining, preserving, and protecting the lawful rights of all citizens."
Thank you.
And he will also be going to state level.
Thank you very much.
And Supervisors, we look forward to working with you guys again next year, is this is a yearly thing? Thank you, guys.
Commissioners, if you'll allow, we have a person who has, from ASAP, that would like to appear tonight to extend an invitation to us. I know it's not on the agenda, but she called, I think, well, I got notified up today anyway. Go ahead.
So hello, Commissioners. My name is Alicia Price, and I serve as the current Executive Director at ASAP of Anderson. I am here tonight to extend an invitation to you, but to also introduce you to an individual in the crowd. Her name is Kayla Simon. So she is going to be the new Executive Director at ASAP of Anderson, as I am resigning effective December 31st. So she is going to be getting started with us at the beginning of December. We have the opportunity to cross-train for about a month, and I truly look forward to your being able to work with her moving forward. I think she will be a really integral role in the community moving forward, and I truly look forward to you meeting her. So that said, I'm actually here today, and bear with me, it is wordy, so I'm going to read it off the sheet, because there's quite a few. But ASAP is currently working as the Anderson County Point of Contact under a grant awarded to the Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services, and it's called the Comprehensive Opioid Abuse Site-Based Program, or COAP for short, because that's very, very wordy. So this grant actually awards Anderson County the opportunity to participate in a community-wide sequential intercept model mapping and strategic planning workshop, or SIM workshop for short. So this workshop will demonstrate the ways in which mental health, substance misuse, and criminal justice intersect, and how we can best ultimately serve our community. So through the COAP grant, $150,000 per year through 2023 is going to be allocated to Anderson County, and the use of those funds will be determined during the SIM workshop itself. So this workshop is ultimately going to be determining the project's scope, as well as the recipient of the funding, and know that this workshop is going to be facilitated by national consultants. So ASAP is merely the convener of the people. We will be hosting the workshop itself, but everything else is a kind of streamlined, national-based process. So we would invite you, as Commissioners, to certainly participate in this SIM workshop process, knowing that you will bring crucial insight to the process itself, and also knowing that you all have some upcoming opioid funding that's coming down the pipeline. This could be really helpful for you all to just get a little pulse check on what is happening in the community as it relates to substance misuse and opioids. So I would invite you to join us on Tuesday, December 14th, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., as well as Wednesday, December 15th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Please know that I'll be sending you, each of you, an email with this information in it, if you want to be on the lookout within the next couple of weeks. But we would also like to extend a special note of thanks for a couple of the Commissioners who have already volunteered to be a part of this process. Please know that each one of you are welcome to have a seat at the table to learn a little bit more and to provide insight on path to county. So thank you all so much for hosting me tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Commissioners, next item on the agenda is two public hearings. One for the rezoning of property located at the intersection of Faust Carney Road and Old Edgemore Road in Clinton. Tax map 963, Group D, that'd be from a C1 to an R1. And then an amendment to the Anderson County zoning resolution regarding development standards for recreational vehicle parks and campgrounds. Anyone here in the audience tonight wish to address Commission for the public hearing for those two items? Danny, you have anything you want to address with it?
I mean, the rezoning is something that we seen back, I don't know, several months ago, and it was voted down because there was potential talk of putting a mobile home park there. Nobody's come back with an official plan as to what they're going to do. They say they're not going to put a mobile home park there. They're endeavoring to go from C1 to residential, because they say that it will be easy to sell the property as a result of it being residential, because of where it's at. So that's all I know. Why the Realtor is not here to speak to it, you know, I don't know that, to give a little bit more insight, so sorry.
Any questions for Mr. Phillip? Jay, you have anything you want to add?
No, sir, other than we've been contacted by their terms.
Commissioner White, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, sir. If we prove this in regular meeting next, would they have a right to go ahead and put it in a trailer park?
No. Well, not without going through another process.
Then it would still come back to us.
Well, it would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to get a special exception to do so, and then, you know, it would have to go to the Plan of Commission with the site plan. So there's still some other stops in place. This is not, you know, the final place that we come to for a mobile home park.
Okay. And, you know, for a few months there, where we're getting the BZA and the zoning agendas, I don't know, maybe I'm out of sync or something, but it seems like those have stopped, and I hope those will continue on so we can stay abreast of what's going on.
Yeah, I'm sorry I wasn't aware that you wasn't getting them, but thank you for letting me know.
It's all right. I may have missed it on my side, you know. My email's been hacked or something, they say, so.
Okay.
You just get what you can. I don't mind supporting this, as long as it's not opening up any liability for us, and I sure don't want to see a trailer park go in. I understand a trailer could go in.
Yeah, this is true.
But not a trailer park, and we've already discussed. So I'll lean towards supporting it, as long as they're held to stay within those standards that are outlined in the zoning. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Do I need to say something about the campground regulations? We worked on that for several months in the Plan of Commission, our office, just kind of setting forth some criteria to go in the zoning resolution as a result of there being such a high demand for this. I mean, there's several people that has come into our area, bought parcels, wanting to develop a campground primarily to cater to the people that come here from all over the place to ride in the mountains. And so we really didn't have any really good criteria in the zoning resolution for that. We had some stuff there, but this is a little bit more detailed. Again, we worked on this for months. This has been before the Plan of Commission. Mr. Joe Barrett with East Tennessee Development District has helped us with this, and I feel like what we got is pretty good, so.
That's good news.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Good work.
Commissioner White, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Yeager, did we need to hear what the attorney said? You said you'd been contacted by the attorney. Do we need to hear what they?
Nothing, sir. Just monitoring the situation.
Okay, thank you.
I think the call was just to let us know they've engaged an attorney.
I got one more question, if you don't mind. Now, by moving it to this new zoning, prior taxes are still due, correct?
From my understanding, that they are, but, you know, I'm not saying this has been smart or anything, but I don't work in that area, so I don't know all the details on that, but I have heard that, so I can't confirm.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Thank you, Danny. Yes, sir.
Anyone else in the audience want to comment on these two issues? If not, we'll be in recess till the 6:30 agenda. Start with a prayer by Commissioner White, pledge allegiance by Commissioner Val.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I know he's at home watching TV, but let's remember our fellow Commissioner, Commissioner McCamey, who is still at home recovering from his injury.
Yes. Thank you.
Our most kind and precious Heavenly Father, we thank you for this privilege and this opportunity to be gathered one more time as a county commission. We thank you for each Commissioner, Lord. We have learned from each one. We respect each one. We ask you, God, for all of our county, that you would lead this commission in a way that we could bless the efforts of the school department, the sheriff's department, the mayor, everybody, Lord, that's concerned with this county government. We'd ask you, Lord, that you would help us to make the decisions that would benefit them, and we'll always give you the praise and the honor. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll move on to appearance of citizens. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on any issue that's not on the agenda, you can come up now and state your name and address, and you'll have three Seeing no one, we'll move on to approval and correction of agendas. Start with a consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We got, the ADA committee got their report in a little late, so I'd like to ask that we have the ADA committee report placed on the consent agenda.
Add that to the agenda, okay.
And I placed a copy of the minutes of the meeting at everyone's station.
Any other corrections to the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve as amended?
So, ma'am.
Motion. Motion by Commissioner Wondell. Motion, motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Mead. All those in favor of approving as amended?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll move to the regular agenda. I guess Brian's out, can't clear the board yet. Motion to approve by Commissioner Wondell.
Sure.
Have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Meredith. Any discussion on the regular agenda? All those in favor of approving as amended?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have public hearing report by Vice Chairman Val.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had two public hearings. One was for a rezoning of property located at the intersection of Faust Carney Road and Old Ledgmore Road in Clinton. That was on the tax map nine six three, Group D from C one to R one. And then we also had a public hearing, which was an amendment to the Anderson County zoning resolution regarding development standards for recreational vehicle parks and campgrounds.
Motion to approve by Commissioner White, seconded.
Both issues.
Approve both, as a whole, seconded by Commissioner Meredith. Any discussion on proposals? Let's go to the board and vote on this one, if we can.
This isn't working.
It's not working at all? Okay, oh, Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, we talked about it in the public hearing, but I just, a lot of people are watching for that Faust Carney, Old Ledgmore property on the corner there. It was my understanding in that meeting that zoning said that on the current application, they would, they're not applying for a trailer court or trailer park, so I tend to support it as, as long as that that's not going to happen. And my understanding is if it was going to happen, they would still have to go through BZA, and we'd be notified through BZA, so as long as it's not going to be a trailer park or an extension of, I'll support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wondell. Any other discussion? Is it working?
Yeah, we're ready to vote if it's.
Still not working. I guess, can we do, we can do a voice vote with this, can't we? Yeah, let, oh, there we go, okay.
Mine won't work. So, my guess is it's your fan. I'll be glad to throw it against the wall.
Well, no, Brian was working on it before the meeting started.
Anything else for public hearing? That concludes the report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. All right, next, we've got department presentations, human resources director, Kim Whitaker.
Good afternoon. Try not to take up a lot of time. Before I get started on the human resources report, I'd like to make just a few announcements that are relatable. The Anderson County Annual Veterans Food Drive is going on now. Special thank you to Leon for agreeing to collaborate with us again. Prior year, we helped nine local families in making sure that they had Thanksgiving dinner. This year, we already have eight, and the last day to drop off food will be Friday. The, in December, HR is hosting a Christmas decorating contest. More information will be submitted, but tonight I'm here to help solicit some judges, so if any of you all are interested, please let us know. The Anderson County Employee Annual Survey has been completed. The employees have done their portion. We'll receive that data back. It's my goal to have that to you after the first of the year to help you in your decision making for the 2022, 23 fiscal year. Okay? So I'll go ahead and move on to the Anderson County Human Resources annual report. This is for 2020. Yes, ma'am.
Got a question, Commissioner Denenberg.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Kim, what, thank you. What type of food items are you still in need of?
We've had several. Honestly, the employees have really done well this year. If you'd like to call in, we're going to go through the bags and start sorting on Wednesday, and that tells us what we need and what's remaining, and then after that, we'll know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can we give you a cash donation on that?
Absolutely. That will be used to help buy the turkeys.
There you go.
Thank you. I'll pick that up. That it? Okay. So I'll move on to the annual report for HR. It's for the 2020 year. It starts in your packet on page twenty-six through thirty-four for your agenda packet. And I'm only going to hit a few highlights. At any time that you have any questions, please let me know. Page twenty-seven speaks to the HR team's annual training. Pages twenty-eight, twenty-nine gives various statistics, and then budget savings with collaboration savings on pages thirty-one and thirty-two. We did see a slight decrease in our workers' comp and OSHA recordables, which is great because that always generates a premium savings. There was an increase in open records requests for 2020, but I can tell you that 2021 has already surpassed 2018. Title VI requirements and audits are escalating, and it requires much more detail and training, and a special thank you to the mayor for always helping out with that. The Anderson County employee and management training did decline in 2020, as you can imagine, due to COVID-19 restrictions. Page twenty-eight speaks to turnover rates. In 2020, we saw an eight percent increase. Just to give you an idea of where we stand in 2021, the month of August, we onboarded forty-three new hires. Experienced twenty-one terminations and twenty-one changes statuses, and of those forty-three new hires, ten of them termed before the following month, creating approximately fifty-five hours of onboarding and offboarding in the HR office just in August alone. So we're still seeing a great increase there. Does anybody have any questions over anything thus far? Yes, sir.
Do you do exit interviews with those?
Absolutely.
And what's kind of the feedback of?
Of why they're leaving?
Yeah.
It's, it varies. COVID has been a reason for a lot of it in 2020 and in 21. We are seeing salaries still being an issue, the ability to work from home, which is something I don't think that we're ever really going to be able to go a hundred percent to like a lot of other companies can, and just some basic benefit options that they're getting So on page thirty-two speaks to the Thriving Health Wellness Center savings since inception, and that's something I want to draw your attention to. The county has experienced a savings of $1.3 million since inception. And to the employees, they have seen over $266,000 back in their pockets since the inception of the onsite health clinic. Because of that, I want to say thank you. From the bottom of my heart, thank you. It's helped the county, it's helped taxpayers, it's helped the employees, and it has been a true benefit. If you've ever experienced or got to use the clinic, you know a little bit more about what I'm talking about. But on top of the monetary value that the clinic has placed in the county, we have also experienced, due to health risk assessments that have been facilitated, numerous critical illnesses have been discovered prior to and treated effectively, which has added, as you can imagine, quality and quantity of life to our members. So, thank you. Page thirty speaks to teamwork, and it remains a key indicator of the growth of the HR office. Each are labeled accordingly for 2020 only, and if you'll notice, we have still seen a compounded employee contacts of over a thousand contacts in that one year, and that again is compounded contact, so it's more than one contact. And that is probably one of the things that I am most proud of. It took some doing. Since my coming to Anderson County is in 2015, we've seen a great increase, and I'm very proud of the HR team for that. Does anybody have any questions outside of that? Okay. Page thirty-three, it shows and introduces our new, this is it, our new benefits and wellness clerk, Ms. Crystal Burkhardt. She had to hit the ground running when she got here, and she has done an awesome job. And one of the things I'd like to speak about just briefly is the wellness program that has been implemented and put in place since she's been here. It's really been her cup of tea, it's been in her wheelhouse, and she has done amazing. We have seen double engagement numbers in our members. She's the one that has implemented the food truck on Wednesdays. We are getting ready to do our first quarter luncheon, which recognizes those members who are in the wellness program that have got so many points. But this year's wellness program have went beyond the physical and the emotional well-being. It's also talking about community, financial wellness, professional, social, and spiritual wellness, and all of those will be hit on during the year. And so just wanted to speak to that, to also drive engagement in this month in the new enrollees that are entered into a drawing for wellness bag. So, one thing that I inadvertently omitted in the report, the tenure awards are underway for 2021, and it's HR's efforts along and in collaboration with the department heads to support our staff, hoping to raise morale and also give a heartfelt appreciation to those who have given years of service to the county and to the citizens. So 2020 rendered twenty-three employee recognitions, and that was among thirteen departments. So, do you want to have any questions on any of that? Okay. That was all I really wanted to hit on, just kind of some highlights. It's an in-depth report, if you want to take time to go back and review it. So I guess at this time, I'm going to turn it over to my HR advisory chair, Commissioner Denenberg, for presentation of the minutes. Or you want me to do it?
I would appreciate it if you would.
I sure can.
I have no voice to give.
Okay, I can do that. On page two of your agenda packet is the Human Resources Advisory Committee minutes. I've never presented this before, so all I know to do is really present the things that require action and that we're looking for a vote on, is that correct? Okay. All right, so on page two, number two reads, under HR Director Report, proposed change to policy language concerning the 120-day contracts found in Section 6.10 of the retirement plan in the employee handbook. Motion by Robbie Holbrook and seconded by Gary Long to approve the proposed change and sent to commission with recommendation for approval, and it was passed by a voice vote. It's being submitted to commission for your approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Meredith?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mead for approval. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
On page three, down at the bottom, number three, under Old Business, Law Director Jay Jaeger presented a proposed voting leave policy revision. Motion by Robbie Holbrook and seconded by Rex Lynch to send to commission with recommendation for approval, passed by a voice vote, and being submitted to commission for approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Mead, seconded by Commissioner Scott. Any discussion?
I didn't hear what the proposal was.
Can you repeat that?
Yes, it's a voting leave policy amendment presented by Law Director Jaeger.
You want me to explain it to you? I didn't hear, I couldn't hear. Yes. Just take a minute here. What it does is it encourages early voting practices instead of taking off for three hours on a day to go vote. Our voting leave policy currently is the employees have three hours to off, paid, to go vote. Well, that policy was developed years ago before the advent of all the early voting procedures, and it's very difficult for some of our larger employment departments like EMS, like the sheriff's office, if everybody asks to leave and go vote for three hours, that's going to put them at a staff shortage. So what it does, it requires them to get prior notice 24 hours in advance if they have to use three hours on voting day, election day, and it encourages all employees to use early voting. So that's the changes there.
Commissioner Mead.
I want to point out something that I was very much in favor of. One of the requirements for people to use this is that they be scheduled to work on election day from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And so there's not going to be a lot of people that do that. It's maybe some sheriff's department, some public safety people, and people that are actually working the election. That might be the only ones that are busy all day that day, but I think this is a fair way to go, like the law director was saying. The old policy was when we didn't have early voting for all the time we have now. There's even a couple, there's even a Saturday or two.
Yes, sir.
That they can vote on, and so they should, they should be able to fit that in, but just in case they don't plan well and they meet this criteria, I see no problem with them getting a few hours to go vote.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The last item that is up for commission approval is on page two. It's the sixth item down. It says evacuation plan. MA Director Payne and Karen Uten presented the proposed update to the emergency action plan requested in May 12th, 2021 meeting. Motion by Jeff Cole and seconded by Rex Lynch to send to commission with approval passed by voice vote. Director Payne is here tonight too, if you have questions of him on that matter.
You've got a motion to approve by Commissioner Denenberg, seconded by Commissioner Scott. Any discussion? Commissioner Mead.
Although I'm in favor of going ahead with this plan, I think it's a step in the right direction. I did have a concern that there's been a training element that's been taught nationwide for a long time, particularly as it refers to active shooter situations, which is run, hide, fight. That's being taught nationwide, it has been for a number of years. And even though I know that that is being taught in a bunch of different departments and the sheriff's department and everything, it's not mentioned in the plan at all in that way. And I just think that although I'm fine to go ahead the way it is now, we should think about the fact that we should, that needs to be in, in everyone's mind, because clearly if you can get the heck out of the building, that's the way to go. Okay? If you can't- Okay, if you can't get out of the building, if you can lock yourself and the people you're with in a secure place, that's the way to go. But it does come to a point that if someone's just going to come in and start taking people out, if the people rise up against them, it does work. One of the nationwide shown examples is the Unitarian Church in Knoxville, Tennessee. They had a guy down there a number of years ago that just started shooting people. And the people in the congregation just jumped them and stopped it. And I think there was only one or two people that were actually casualties because they jumped them right away. Sometimes, sometimes you just don't have the opportunity to run or hide. And sometimes the most prudent thing to do is just to stop what's going on. That's not, and I've said this a lot of people, that's not to say the people should try to go after the person. If you can get the heck away and the people you're with can get away, you do that first. And if you can't get away, by God, you lock yourself in someplace secure where you're going to be secure until the police come and take over. But if those are, if those are not available, fighting may be an option that needs to be at least thought about. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy.
The question I have, maybe Steve or Karen can help me, is those with special needs who may be in a wheelchair or using a walker or cane, do you have procedures for getting those people out evacuated in case we have an emergency here in the building?
Yes, sir, we do. We have areas of refuge. And the areas of refuge are in the same place on all three floors. This room, purchasing, and then the new exit. Each room will have a telephone. Each room is by the steps where the fire department can come in and get them. So this, we have the areas of refuge in the same place on all three floors.
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. And I'm sure the people at home want to know that also.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Scott.
Steve and Kim, I'd like to ask that the two of you perhaps get together and maybe come up with an active shooters class to be able to teach the employees how to act and react rather than take it from someone else's opinion. Maybe get with the Sheriff's Department to ask for assistance as well.
So in 2019, we did get with the Sheriff's Office, and they helped us do an active shooter training. We have not done one since then. COVID has delayed some of those, but we've already been in contact with Owens in regards to having one next year. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So in closing, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to come up and speak tonight. Also, a special thank you to Mayor Frank, Operations Committee and Commission. You all have continued to support the ESL lead that is related to COVID, which is coming before you again tonight. And I just want to say thank you for that as well.
Thank you. Okay, next, we've got committee reports. We've got purchasing report by Catherine Azure Mary.
Good evening, everybody. Hopefully this will be short. We only have two action items for you all. The first one being a contract that's been approved by the law director between the Highway Department and Hallsdale Powell Utility District submitting for your approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Jaeger, seconded by Commissioner Waddell. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And then the other item is a request to surplus a capital asset from the Board of Education. And this is a 2002 Chrysler minivan submitting for your approval.
Got a motion by Commissioner Waddell, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
And that's all the action items. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, you too.
Next up, budget report. Robbie Holbrook, Finance Director.
Thank you, Chairman Anderson. Right, cash and fund balance report for month ending October. For the general fund, restricted funds are 979,623. Committed funds, 1.7 million. Assigned funds are 2.1 million. An assigned fund balance is at 10,225,260, and total fund balance 15,119,548. And cash is at 13,265,398. Still unaudited. I do have audit entries, but we haven't got them made yet. So we will definitely have audited numbers for November.
Commissioner Waddell.
Robbie, I'm trying to look at this cash trends.
Yes, sir.
The top line, I assume, is this year, right?
The cash trends, yes, sir, it is. And to the left of that shows you, that's the general fund, all the balances for October. But that is the top line, which is, that is 21, 22 cash.
What do you attribute the spread? I mean, the highest previous was 10 million, and now we're starting off at roughly just under 16 million.
Well, now, last year at the end of June, it got all the way up over 14 million. But some of it's the COVID money that we've received. And I will say the state direct appropriation grant, the last two years the governor has given all the counties and the state has helped. We've saved some of our own money by spending it for capital needs. Obviously, the sales taxes helped a lot, and our property tax collections. I mean, the trustees office has done a really good job the last, you know, the last year and a half collecting taxes.
Thank you. We haven't spent any of the ARP funds yet, right?
Only a small portion for the Sheriff's Department for the body scanner. We're trying to get approved with the ARP funds, like 123,000.
That request came through this body?
It did.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, sales tax for September. We had a very good month, 3.7 million for the county as a whole, up 16%. Anderson County's portion was up 61% at 539,632, compared to last September at 334,489. So September was a very good sales tax month.
Commissioner Jaeger.
Is the gambling tax money in this report, or where do we see that?
It's just revenue that comes in. At the end of the year, we move it to a restricted fund. Last year it was 12,700. We only got two quarters in last year, the third.
Oh, it's quarterly?
It comes in quarterly, yes, sir. I can bring it up to date next month though on that, sure. Okay, for the, if there's not any more questions for budget amendments, group two appropriations by the school, there was one for 525,000. It's a retirement amendment for, actually in June's retirement did not get posted back to June. So we're moving money, all the money rolled into the fund balance, so we're moving it back to cover that. Need a motion for approval. Sorry.
Motion by Commissioner Denenberg, seconded by Commissioner Fritz. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. There was one school transfer for payroll from the school nutrition department for 145,790, decreasing food service equipment by that amount of money.
Motion by Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Any discussion? Go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, one non-school transfer for payroll from Archives and Records for $1,000 from part-time help to clerical personnel.
Motion by Commissioner Waddell, seconded by Commissioner Waddell. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Group five appropriations, non-school, there are nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 16 was omitted, and 17. Seeking approval as a group or individually, or I can answer any questions.
Motion by Commissioner Fritz to approve as a group, seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any discussion?
Is that group four?
That's group five.
Five.
Group five.
Yes, sir.
Group five.
Yes, sir.
Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, group six appropriations that affect the unassigned fund balance. There is one from the mayor for 275,000 for the Norwood Safety Project. It also involves a grant, our matching portion though is 270, 275,000.
Commissioner Waddell.
Thank you. We talked about this in budget, and just one of the things that I had concerns about was that this is all taking place in the city of Oliver Springs, and they're not putting any money in for the matching. Normally, when we do these, we just did one back several months ago for Norris, and we help them out with the matching, but normally the cities do put in. So I'd like to see them put in something. I'd like to see them put in half, but, thank you.
Commissioner Jaeger.
Is this on school grounds?
Yes, I believe so, yes, sir. The mayor.
Well, no, actually, it's on right-of-way, but it's on both sides of the road. So the, it's a state highway, and that right-of-way is inside the city limits. But this is a county school, so we have Norwood Elementary School and Norwood Middle School. And this is a project that's coming at the request of the school. So for instance, the Student Government Association, three years in a row we've tried to get this. We're actually eligible for another. This is one that's completely unanticipated. We have another one that has been submitted that's 5% and we're applying for up to a million dollars on this one. So it's, it's for the county schools. That is the purpose, but it's for the children that live also in the surrounding community.
I'm kind of like my cohort here. Is this any way that the schools could participate in this rather than just the general fund? If this was a school request?
I mean, I can definitely ask them. I mean, I would, I would hope that you would approve it and then allow me the opportunity to work with them just so that I could accept the grant.
All right. All right, thank you.
I would not be coming if it were not for the Anderson County students in the school. Oliver Springs is, is not going to apply for this. They do not have the funding to be able to do that. This isn't a downtown Main Street promoting retail in the city of Oliver Springs. This is about the students that go to two county schools. And the highest ranking, when we put these applications forward, Norwood Elementary, I don't know the current numbers, but has the highest obesity rates they have had. Again, I don't have the most current. But as part of the application process, we look at the demographics of the students in the various systems. They have, I don't know if they currently do, but they had, at the time of my initial application, the highest rates of poverty and nutritional scores of high blood pressure, which if you're looking at young people with blood pressure issues, you have an issue. So part of this is also about encouraging, they, they used to have a safe routes to school program that they no longer do. So we've done that in the Rocky Top area. They gave away, the state gave away bikes and did things like that to encourage the young people to not just ride, but get out, walk, ride a bike. So that is part of the application that we did submit.
Thank you. Commissioner Fritz.
Of course, the minutes don't reflect it, but that was a no vote also at the thing. My concern is too, is this is in the city, the city's not participating. If you read anything associated with the Claxton area, the Facebooks and things, or social media and stuff, you constantly read how the people in the Claxton area, which is one of the largest districts in the area, you'll notice in their thing is people are very concerned and upset about the safety and stuff about the other school and the problems they're having with the Claxton Elementary School out there. But you never see nothing going on and being done money-wise in the Claxton area. We're always doing stuff that either in the other areas and everything. You'll never see anything being done in the Claxton area other than a little vote to help do this or a little vote to help that. But financially, to help with the safety problems and stuff, nothing is being done along that lines. Could Claxton use better sidewalks and stuff around the schools? Could Claxton use better things to help the construction and the crossings and helping people get across and that? There's all kinds of issues out there, but nothing is ever being done. And that is rural areas, not in the city.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Oh, sure.
Commissioner Fritz, we did actually request of T-Dot because we're doing a widening expansion. I think you were unable to be there. You got called to work overtime at Y-12 that day. But Commissioner Waddell was on the call. We did request sidewalks, and T-Dot did put sidewalks through that entire corridor for the Edgemore Road widening. Dr. Parrott was on that call, the sheriff was on that call. We're looking at signalization. This body also did a request for lighting.
Has nothing that's been done though, not yet.
They're awarding the contracting, I mean, that's the next, so they've done, they've divided it into two sections. The one section that is at the bridge down to Claxton Elementary is one contract that's been let for the final construction drawing. So they finished the design phase. And then the other project is through Oak Ridge.
I would probably be dead before a lot of that is done.
Well, and I do want to remind you that this body did pay. So when Wiggles did come, this body did put forward money to help widen that particular intersection. And there was a lot of meetings on grounds at Claxton Elementary. We did put that turn lane, which has turned out to be a real blessing for Claxton Elementary. We went out when there were the safety issues because of the stacking. And so part of that negotiation was actually asking for that turn lane before this county actually contributed funding to doing that widening on the backside, which was Edgemore Road. So we did fund that as a county. It's just, it's been a few years.
Well, I'm just glad that this is being televised so that people at Claxton can see, you know, that we do have issues and concerns about what needs to be done up there in the Claxton. Because the face, social media's been lit up with concerns about the Claxton area out there and the safety issues associated with the children and the things going on around that area.
Go ahead, Dr. Parrott.
We ordered the new lighting for, for the Raccoon Valley. The flashing sign for the, back in September. It's been on order since September. We've still not got it in. It's almost, it's about it's almost, it's about, I think it's about $18,000. We met with the police department a week ago and our safety team, and we've ordered another light to put another one there when people turn on to Edgemore. Even though we've got one on all four lights, the people think there needs to be another one there to remind people when they turn on to, and turn on to Edgemore that they've done that. We've got another one ordered for that one. So, the, the biggest concern, I think, like the mayor's talked about when we was on there, was about a crosswalk, and we wanted down at the end, down at where people come out, we want another red light put down there, and they're going to be working on that area. So, so we are aware of it, and that, right now, things just take a long time to get, we still have no idea when that lighting will be in. The good thing about it is, it's all solar, we don't have to wait on CUB to put power and everything to it, but they are ordered.
Thank you. Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you. Dr. Parrott, you said September, I assume September of this year you ordered them, and we don't know when they'll be in?
I was having a lot of ideas.
And what process, who puts those lights in once they come in?
The place we ordered from, I'm not sure of the company's name, but they're the one who get all of them from.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm kind of with Commissioner Fritz here. You know, I know I've been asking about a light Claxton for two years. They were ordered last month. I'm looking at $711,316, excuse me, $711,396 federal grant, and I, and I just ask myself, what's the process when it comes to looking at our school system? I mean, it's no secret, everybody looks at social media. Our community is reaching out to us as commissioners, we relay the message, Mr. Chairman, and, you know, I don't, like Commissioner Fritz, I don't see any action. Thank God for our highway superintendent who put out some signs, because we had none for a while on Raccoon Valley coming down. And I just don't know what the difficulty is in taking some of the taxpayers' dollars and making it safe in Claxton. I, I don't understand it. I'll support this for Oliver Springs, because I'm all about safety, but what I'm begging you to do is to get some safety lights in Claxton, and you might want to go to a different vendor. You know, make it a priority, but don't, don't just say, well, we ordered it. I want to see some lights out there. I mean, I, I'd even go as far as, if you give me the flashers, I'll stand out there in the mornings and do it myself, because I'm tired of seeing the, the danger out there. Now, I'll, hats off to the sheriff's department, they have been out there. I see their cars, and, and the community has seen them, so we appreciate that. I've driven through myself to make sure. But with the cars and the police force, we also need tickets issued, because once people start getting tickets, they'll realize that we're just not parked there to slow you down, we're going to issue tickets when you break the law and endanger our kids, so, and I hate to be so passionate about it, Mr. Parrott, but two years, I mean, if you're asking me for something for two years, I think you'd at some point go, Commissioner, I don't believe you're going to come through for me, it's been a little, little while. And I, you know, it's not a hard task for me. I mean, do we, can I help you by appropriating some money from the undesignated fund balance? I mean, what do we need to do?
We do have, we do have flashing lights coming down Clinton Highway, we've got them on all sides, but on Raccoon Valley, you're exactly right, Raccoon Valley's the one that needs one, but we have them the other ways, but we're going to put an extra one in there, too. So, we do have flashing lights on there.
Well, I mean, those, I, I don't know, have you looked at the signs and the flashing lights? I mean, they're about 35 years old. I mean, they're about this big. I, I've just sat here and researched on Google flashing lights before this came up. I didn't know my fellow commissioner was going to bring it up, and we're getting off subject, Mr. Chairman, I apologize, but since the opportunity presented itself, I think we should talk about it. So, there's a lot of lights out there that are available, solar, as you mentioned, there's all types. I even think TDOT, and I think the mayor could probably help, and I'll be happy to call TDOT, too. There's some lights we can put on, the, the red lights, flashing yellow lights, when school's in session, they come on automatically. I, I mean, I, I would not feel comfortable if I was in your position as the school superintendent with the little bit of lights that are at that intersection with all the traffic that's there. I mean, we've got two or three Anderson County officers every morning and every day at Anderson County High School. How many have you made available in Claxton to stand out there and direct traffic?
We, we don't do any traffic directing there.
Well, City of Clinton does, I tell you now.
No, I'm talking about in Anderson County, yes, we do, but we don't do any traffic there because of the way the cars come out. We can work with the county on that. I, as you know, I, I am all about safety. We, this is the third project that the mayor's worked on, we worked on one in Andersonville, we've worked on one at Lake City, and this one she's been working on for two years. We do understand there's some concern at Claxton, and we are working on it.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, let's go with, go ahead, Commissioner Fritz.
Is the riding of the road from Oak Ridge all the way down to Edgemore Road, they've been talking about that for the past 12, 16 years, and that's the reason, you know, I'm not too excited about that happening anytime in the very near future. I mean, it could, that's why I say it may happen after I'm dead and gone, but they say it's going to happen, but that, plus I heard that there's no, no funding available for it. But, so, if the sidewalks and this, that, that's going to be put in when that's done, it may be another 20, 30 years down the road, I mean, who knows?
Mayor Frank, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do know that the widening on Edgemore was moved up on the transportation plan after the Improve Act, and I also want to say that, that Dr. Parrott did reach out to me about trying to facilitate some grant funding on some of the safety lighting. TDOT did get back with me, and they could not, and that is when I let him know that they couldn't do it at this time, it was going to be a long wait, that they would put it into that longer widening project, but we knew that you wanted this sooner rather than later, so when I heard from them that it was going to be possibly years, that's when the conversation took place about, the schools just funded that on their own, out of their own. I think you appropriated money for that.
I'm just looking for some lights.
Sure, sure.
I'm happy with sidewalks, but lights is what the people want, to slow people down in the sidewalks. If it takes two more years, it takes two more years. I haven't heard anybody call me asking for sidewalks. I've had two, I've had, for two years now, people asking, where's the lights at, Tracy? Why can't you get the lights? What's wrong with you and Commissioner Fritz? Well, we pass the message on, we pass the message on, we pass the message on, and, and I appreciate all the sidewalks, I want to see some lights. I mean, again, stroke a check, buy the lights, get them and put in, it's that simple.
Yes, sir.
But maybe it isn't. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Meade.
Yeah, I think it's time to get back to the motion. I think that the, whereas I'm very much in favor of lighting around the schools, because I think it does really make an impact to people driving by when they see those lights. It just is a constant visual reminder of where they're driving at the time. But here, this, this Norwood Safety Project, we got an opportunity to get very substantial grant, and this particular project qualifies for grant, some of these other lighting ones did not. I think it would be, it would be malfeasance on our part as a commission to not at least try to get this grant. What was it, what, 800?
771,000.
$871,000.
771, yeah.
And, and then this 270, this 275,000 would only be necessary if the grant is approved, right?
Yes. Well, no, that is, that is an award, and if we choose to accept it, then we would need to match, and the 275 is the, is our portion, then that, then that triggers us being eligible for another one, which would be 95% funded by the state.
And so, all I'm saying is that it ends up being, we would pay only a fraction of the cost, and, and I think we need to go ahead, so I recommend a move ahead with a vote, and I, I ask people to consider that it's the right thing for the county, and it is, you kind of, you kind of sometimes have to take the opportunities that come along, and this is one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smallridge.
All right, I, I plan to support the motion, but, but I would also say I'd be, as one commissioner, be certainly willing to, even if we had to take it out of fund balance, to do what we need to do to support the problems that have been described here.
You will say.
Thank you. No other discussion, let's go to the board and vote. 12 yes, 3 no, motion passes.
Okay, thank you all. Under group seven miscellaneous, under new business, there was the finance department's budget amendment, it was already passed under group five appropriations, and section B, old business, the fire truck bulk purchase was discussed in budget meeting, but no action was taken. So, that's all I have.
Any other questions for Robbie? Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Robbie.
All right, next we've got the director of schools, Dr. Parrott.
Mr. Wondell, I, I will work on that, I, I apologize if you think that I've, I've slacked off on that, it was not my intention, and maybe I was misinformed, but I thought the only light we were needing was the light on Old Edgemore, I mean, on Raccoon Valley. And we will look on trying to upgrade those lights in the, in the other ways.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just, I also want to apologize, I do respect you, you know that, and I have no qualms with you personally, you're a great leader for the county school system. I, I appreciate what you just said, and that's all I'm looking for, is some lights, and I thank the people in our community, as Chuck said, looking for some lights, and I, you know, to kind of move from negativity to something positive, I want to thank you and your school system again. From my perspective, you and the school system were the absolute leaders in the nation when it came to the COVID. I don't think you get enough recognition or the school administration for the plan you put in place, and all, and during that process, catching a lot of static, we'll call it, but you stood, you stood tall, the, the school system stood tall, and when I'm in Nashville at the Tennessee County Commissioners Association, hearing all the horror stories at, at other places, and they all aren't bad, but it, it's so refreshing and confident to know that our school system took the lead and just did it, Mr. Chairman, they just, they just ran with it. And, and there wasn't any question of when you wore a mask, when you didn't wear a mask, what the process was when you were to wear, wear a mask, and I know it wasn't perfect, but to me, it was, and I just want to say thank you, so, we'll leave it with something positive.
Thank you. Thank you. And I do hope you all had a chance to look at the commission report that we do every month, there's a lot of, a lot of great stuff in there, especially, too, want to thank Commissioner Isabel for his help with the football field over here and the fencing he did, and everybody else that put in for it and come around and did, you all did a great job on that, so, so thank you so much for that. Oh, yeah, yeah, and, and that, that, I'm not sure who that was, but we had a Bigfoot race yesterday, and there was about 140 people that came out and supported the Boys and Girls Club of North Anderson County at Wind Rock Park, so one of the things, I, I did run that race, so it, it is, it was a hard 3.2 miles, I can tell you that.
Hey, there, there's a couple more pictures, but we, we're not going to share them yet.
Yeah, there you go, there you go, thank you for that. One of the things, too, that the school board approved at the last meeting was our ESG project for $4.9 million for upgrades to Lake City Middle School, Lake City Elementary School, Norwood Elementary School, and Norris Elementary School. We have, that is through our ESER funds, and that's totally going to be funded out of that, so that really and truly gets our school system, other than Claxton, and we know we need a new school at Claxton, and just as soon as we get these projects going underway, we're going to start working. We've already had one meeting with the mayor and with Cumberland Securities on how to secure financing for that. We were, we were hoping that the infrastructure bill, if you knew, there was about 5.2 million in that infrastructure bill, that would have came to us for new construction, and I guess at the 12th or 24th hour, that $20 billion was cut out of that infrastructure bill for all new school funding, so we really hated to see that when a lot of other things were left in that bill, that we know that public education is one of the cornerstones of Anderson County and of the country, and for that to be taken out at the last minute, it, it really bothered us, but we're still going to move forward because we know our county finances are, and our school finances will be in good enough shape to where we, we really believe that our fund balance will drop off enough that we can secure that loan and not have to, we will borrow money but not have to add to the yearly debt service fund with that, so we're excited about that. Another thing that, just to talk about, is Norris Elementary School is working on being certified as art education school, and it is, they're going to do art integration, they're spending about, they spent the last year really trying to integrate art, and they've worked, and our art teacher's actually taking classes to integrate art into the curriculum, so we're working on getting that certified. This year at Claxton, we hired a STEM coach to start, as we look at this new school, to be a STEM-certified school, and she, we got her out of Kentucky, and she's actually working with all of our elementary schools, but especially with Claxton to make sure that we get STEM-certified. I was pushing her to try to get STEM-certified this year, but she said, we want to be ready for it, so that's something we're probably looking at next year for Claxton. Last but not least, our school recognize, our school board recognizes a group of our, our team members every month, this last month, it was our custodians. We know that when we talk about the COVID and how we, we had to work through and make sure everything was clean, our custodians were the backbone of making sure our schools were ready for our students, and we recognize them, recognized one for each school for going above and beyond, and our U Trust Fund, that money comes back to us from our U Trust account every year. Every one of them got $25 in, in certificates, so those are just a few things that I wanted to go over, and I will take any questions.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just quickly to follow up on that STEM, I'd like, if we could, I, I had the opportunity to meet that young lady from Kentucky, very sharp and intelligent, was able to meet with the principal, Jennifer Coleman, have lunch brought in by, I'd like to also thank Edgemore Baptist Church, I know there's many other churches helping as well, trying to give back to the teachers and understand what the kids are needing, love that, hats off to Jennifer for doing that. But I'd like to have myself and Commissioner Fritz, and along with the mayor, and yourself, and the STEM young lady, and Jennifer, the principal, meet with Burt Robinson and TVA, I think it would do well for us to sit down and explain the STEM aspect of it. I think they, they would like to hear more about that, and hearing it from the academic side versus from some guy that sits over here and just talks too much, I think it'd be better.
That's great, yeah, and we still want TVA to help us with, to pay for that new school.
Oh, yes, sir, I think they'd be very interested, especially with the STEM program. Thank you.
Commissioner Scott.
Dr. Parrott, when I was in Memphis recently at a conference for county commissioners, and one of these speakers had, had talked about Blue Oval City, about the Ford Motor Company coming out to the outskirts of Memphis, and they were stressing how much they're going to need pipe fitters and welders and to build this ginormous city that will have approximately 6,000 employees to build the F-150s electrical, or the electric pickup trucks. 6,000 employees to build the F-150s electrical, or the electric pickup trucks. Are you focusing, or do you have teachers that are focusing with the students to push them to this direction in taking computer classes and/or, you know, the pipe fitting classes and the welding classes? They're going to be pulling in people from all over the state, and it's going to leave these high school students to fill the boots of their fathers who are taking on the jobs, or even get to the point of, you know, going out that direction.
Right. We are, we're ahead of the game. As you know, come January, the new TCAT in conjunction with Rome State opens in our industrial park. Our students have been going, our welding students have been going up to the Hensley's Building for the last two years, and they actually come in and teach our students inside of our classrooms. So we're, yes, we're ready for it. All of our classes are completely full. We have over 1,000 students a day go through Anderson County Career and Technical Center. So it is, it's a great place up there. We just hired a new person to teach our machining class, and the last one, he went to Oak Ridge to one of the plants. So we swapped Mr. Wood from, he was doing maintenance at Anderson County High School, but he's doing, he's also teaching industrial maintenance. So that's a big area. And now, we're excited, I mean, to have a TCAT and Rome State facility right across from Anderson County High School that all of our students can go to, you know, they can pretty much walk there. And if you've not been by there, it's state-of-the-art. I mean, it is, it's going to have robotics in there, it's going to have injection molding, diesel mechanic, and HVAC and everything. So, and our students with the, sometimes I fuss about what the government does, but last year they did a new, they upped our dual enrollment. Before, students could only take two to three dual enrollment classes a year, now they can take up to four. And they can go to TCAT their senior year, to where when they get out of high school that summer after they graduate, they can graduate from the TCAT. So our students have a lot of opportunity in Anderson County to do that.
Good. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Creasy.
Thank you, Dr. Parrott. I always enjoy reading your report, and especially today, this program that you had, the white box learning
Yes.
at Lake City Middle
Yes.
eighth grade program. I really enjoyed reading about that. And then at Norris, where the sixth graders were meeting with the author, or Nathan Hale, author Nathan Hale.
Yep.
That, I think that stimulates the students in the science and STEM programs, and I was very impressed with that. That's something to brag about, I think, to the whole community. And this art program, if I may say, my wife and I both were artists when we got married, and I couldn't make a living to raise a family as an artist. She done okay at it. But the only art I got to do was police art, doing composite portraits and that kind of thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Meredith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say about all the commissioners, December the 10th, Commissioner Scott's, the new school will be ribbon-cutting for the chamber. Time to be determined, probably in the afternoon. The governor will be joining us, as well as all the schools, so you'll get an invite, so just stay tuned.
Thank you. Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to commend Dr. Parrott on the TCAT program. I can tell you about, I worked with him personally, the instructors, the welding instructor, everybody they have is top of the line. And with this TCAT program, that they come out, these individuals can go through this program, and after they graduate, they can be in the mid-50s
Yes.
without any debt.
Yeah.
I mean, that's pretty phenomenal.
Yeah.
Two years.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the schooling's 100% paid for, it and the books and everything, yes.
And the thing about this, is the curriculum, especially industrial maintenance, they have, that's what everybody's asking for. Myself as an employer, the people at the plants, that's what they want to be able to do is the industrial maintenance, which encompasses a lot of different things, machining, hydraulics, welding, and all of that. I mean, it's phenomenal. And again, I've said this many times, Anderson County is a beacon to the state and to the nation. Thank you, Dr. Parrott.
Thank you. Thank you.
No, do not send them to other people.
All right, next up, we've got the county mayor report. Mayor Frank.
Just a couple of action items tonight. The first is requesting a motion to approve railroad agreement where TDOT plans to undertake a project described as resurface and safety from Industrial Park Road to near Longmire Road. When I submitted this to the agenda, I did request language of the motion to reflect approval contingent upon the law director and road superintendent review. Both of those gentlemen have reviewed the agreement and are in approval.
Motion by Commissioner Isbell, seconded by Commissioner Jameson. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Oh, sorry, Dr. Smallridge.
Yeah, I was just wondering, our commitment is the road improvements is...
The, our agreement, so this is really, the railroad takes a very long time to agree to anything. But this is a TDOT project that's resurfacing, but then the county has to agree to cooperate, work with them. It's not a funding request from the county, it's just a cooperation request.
Thank you.
Commissioner Creasy.
Was Gary Long involved in that discussion in this preparation and planning?
I do not know that, sir. I know on many projects, what TDOT will do, they will have a, they'll have one-on-one meetings, but then when it goes to final construction, for instance, they're going to be redoing a bridge in, on Old Clinton Highway near Old State, I mean, I'm sorry, Clinton Highway near Old State Circle. There's a bridge there, they're going to redo that. When they get ready to go to the final construction phase, what they will do is have a phone call. They'll have representatives from the county will usually sit in on those. The road superintendent will sit on those if one of us can't be there. So for instance, on that particular one, he had been in communication with them, but during that multi, they have all the parties on that phone call, on a Zoom call with the maps. As an example, on that one, they needed one final thing from him. So I reach out, TDOT reaches out, and make sure to get that input. So it is a collaborative process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All right, let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
The next item is I'm requesting confirmation of the appointment of Mr. Ernie Gonzalez to the Anderson County Regional Plenary Commission to fill vacancy. The term would end in January of 2022. Mr. Gonzalez does have 10 years' experience on the plenary commission, as well as experience at a water authority in another state.
Motion by Commissioner Isbell, seconded by Commissioner Yeager. Commissioner Mead.
The only question I had is, January 2022 is not very far away, is that...
Correct. So that's...
So next month, we're going to do something else to extend him, or?
Yes. So this is to fill a vacancy of an existing term. And so once that expires, then I would come back to you with a proper reappointment.
It just seemed like a pretty short time.
Yes.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote.
I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't a typo.
Nope, nope, that's correct.
Can't connect the server. Connecting. Oh, God. All those in favor of confirmation? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And before I step away, just a couple of things. One, in case I don't see you again, Happy Thanksgiving. And two, I did want to share with you all, just as an aside to the Claxton discussion, there are a lot of things that I will take from the statements that are made in the meetings, and it takes time to work on them. And I want you all to know that I do listen to you. And as an example, with Claxton as an example, knowing that that is a school that has some crowding in discussions with the school system, and Dr. Parrott, we talked about the new build, using that as an opportunity to also not just talk about the physical improvement of the facility, but the curriculum. And so I reached out to Jeffrey Liash at TVA, as well as Randy Boyd at University of Tennessee, and Dr. Thomas Akari at ORNL, and pointed out the logistics of the location of the facility from Bull Run Steam Plant that's planned for closure, and then also just a short, a little bit further hop down the road to ORNL. And this was an opportunity for them to collaborate with Anderson County on how could we design this school to better science, technology, engineering, and math. And so those are discussions that maybe I should do a better job of reporting to you, but those are conversations that are taking place, knowing, you know, some of the things that you all would like to see in your particular districts. But I don't like to come in here and kind of announce it. One, it may just be false hope, you know, I don't want to get anybody's hopes up, and then you say what happened to it. But I do want you to know that I'm advocating for your districts and what you want. And I try to do that in balance, and I know on that particular, the Claxton issue as an example, those are conversations that Dr. Parrott's had with the finance committee, and then he and I continue those conversations in terms of curriculum. So even if I'm not up here bringing you something, know that I'm working on it, and it takes time. You know, a lot of things take time, and there's only one of me. Anyhow, I just wanted to kind of share that.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Wondell.
No, Mayor, that's tremendous. The three individuals you mentioned that you're speaking to is certainly people that can take it to the next level. Did it sound like pretty good feedback from them?
Yeah, yes. I heard back from ORNL. TVA was immediately responsive. I mean, I can go back and pull the date up on that letter, it's been a while.
So it's a thought to have it maybe over there in that old site?
Well, we did share that information as well, so I know they're looking at many things and having many conversations. But the dialogue is happening.
Okay.
And if we get to a meeting point, you and Commissioner Fritz would certainly be invited.
Thank you. No, thank you for what you're doing.
Sure.
I appreciate it. Certainly had no idea, that's good news. Last thing I have, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, Pine Meadows, Ben's Mobile Home update on the civil engineering work that was done?
Okay. So I got the final report. I was scheduled to sit down with Ms. Presley, then I got under the weather, so I had to postpone that meeting a week. We do have the final...
Maybe next operations?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
So we have it, and then I sent it to Jay, and then Jay was under the weather. And so he and I were supposed to, after he got back on his feet, get together and review it.
That's fine.
But we do have it.
Okay, great.
It's final.
We'll just look at operations or...
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something?
Go ahead.
While Jay's coming up, I know we're probably getting tired of hearing about the stories at Tennessee County Commissioners Association, but in another meeting with the Veterans Meeting, it astounded me to hear, and of course, we have a chairman of the Tennessee County Commissioners Association, Mr. Steve Mead is the chairman of the Veterans Committee, been that way probably three, four years now. But what astounded me was the talk of some mayors and counties wanting to get rid of their veteran service officer. And I just was dumbfounded. Why would you want to get, and I understand it's a cost, but I just want to thank the mayor and this body and all those that were ever involved with getting our veteran service officer. Leon provided me a list of the money that comes into the state of Tennessee, broken down with each county. So I sent that on to have Charlie get it out to the members of the Veterans Committee for the state. And those, so there's a few mayors out there that don't see it as a value, and that just kind of shocked me.
We've got about 7,000 veterans in Anderson County, so about 10% of the population. I don't know where that ranks with the rest of the state or country, but it seems like we have a pretty strong presence here in Anderson County of veterans. Thank you, Commissioner. Ready for the law director report.
Appreciate the opportunity to be with all of you tonight, and thank you, Mayor. I know your plate's always full, and you're a workaholic. I see you here on the weekends and all the time, but thank you for all you're doing. If I can ever help you, you know you can call me. Does anybody have any questions on the contract approvals and the long list of Anderson County zoning violations there? I will just advise you this on the note on Pine Meadows subdivision there, I tend to call it Ben's. But I've got, one of our paralegals in our office has been working on this whole project diligently, and she has developed a map, and anybody, certainly Commissioner Wondell and Commissioner Fritz can come by and look at this. And what she's running into is we have one owner for the real estate, a different owner for the mobile home that's in there, and a different occupant. So all three entities are different, and we're having to, when we have to go in there and file suit, which we're trying not to, we ask these people to abate these problems without litigation, we're having to sue all three entities. And it's very complex, but we've got seven ongoing cases in that area. I know the sheriff's office is also working on some other issues down there, so we're putting our attention on that. And I have read that report, and I'm sure the mayor will share it with you at the operations committee. Couple of action items I have, I need approval on that opioid settlement resolution. We've talked about it, and it's ready to go. This is the one that I think was mentioned at the Tennessee County Services Association that's been sent out, and I think there was a block of instruction on that. So we need that approved. And it goes along with the same line that you approved last month for the mayor to go ahead and sign these. Now, remember, the mayor wants county commission to approve any settlement, but she'll execute the documents to get the money coming our way. And that's the way it'll work. Any questions?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The fire truck resolution has been drafted. It was presented by the mayor at operations, but I believe it's been referred to finance committee, and that's where it's at, and we'll work out the details with that. But if you need a copy of that and you don't have it, let me know. And I put a comments page on the very last section of that. If you've got comments, please send them to me. That's why I added it to it. And just handwrite them in there and send it to me, email it, fax it, hand-deliver it, whatever, and we'll get them included and present all that to the finance committee. That new lawsuit, you've all been copied with that, Fetty versus Anderson County. A few of you had concerns about that, but again, these legal complaints are written to get your attention, and they can't prove a lot of this stuff. And Chief Parker and Captain Valor are all over this. You should see the documentation they have on this case. It's, if you need to look at that, you'll feel a lot better about this case. A lot of the stuff is just outright lies, and we can prove that. But anyway, you went through all the zoning violations. If anybody has a question, I know there's a lot there, please call me or email me, and I'll be glad to explain what we're doing on each of these.
I only have a button that says...
Commissioner Scott.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say thank you very much for giving us the list of those that you're giving the opportunity to resolve their violations
We always do that.
or taking the litigation of, but this is, the list is... -or taking the litigation of, but this is, the, the list is great. It shows that you guys are on top of it, so.
Yeah, Danny and Marjorie have been doing a fantastic job.
That's great. There's a lot of them, so it's good to see.
See, he's tremendously overworked down there. At some point in the future, we need to get Danny some help. He spends a lot of days just going out and doing re-inspections for us for compliance issues, but he gets them to it, and we jump on them and do what we need to do to get them in the process. And again, we're looking, we, we don't approach this being punitive. We look for compliance. We just want the places cleaned up, and that's what we're trying to accomplish there. So we'll give you time, we'll put you under a plan of action, and usually 60 to 90 days, and if you can get it cleaned up, we go away.
Well, I'm just, I'm just kind of saddened by the number of people that have junked yards. That's, that's pretty poor.
Yes, ma'am. It is, it certainly is. And these, I want you to know, are the worst-case scenarios. These are not just a couple items laying in somebody's yard, these are terrible locations. We've got photographs of any of these that you want to look at, be glad to share those with you.
Awesome, thank you.
I believe, I've only got one more action item here for you, and that's the Fireworks Private Act ratification. And this is our last shot at this, unless you want to have a special call meeting on it. We have to have it done by December 1st. The mayor and Marjorie have reviewed this, sat down and went through it. Marjorie has accepted the responsibility of the permit issuing and the compliance inspection and referring them to the State Fire Marshal's Office. And I believe the mayor only had one change, and that was the, take the $250 permit down to 25, which I'm certainly agreeable to that. And, but anyway, that's there for our, we need that ratified or not ratified, whatever your pleasure is. We've had some people, fireworks dealers come to the last couple of meetings, wanting to know where we're at on this issue, and they've been very helpful to me in helping to structure some of our local rules and regulations. But if you have any questions on this, let me know. Otherwise, we need to vote it up or not vote on it at all.
Let me get Commissioner Wondell, I think we had something before.
Yeah, it's not on this issue.
Unrelated. Do you, do you want to jump in now or come back?
No, let's go ahead since we're on this issue, I'll come back.
Got a motion by Commissioner Mead.
I would second it, but-
Oh, okay, second. Seconded by Commissioner Isobel.
I think both, well, on this side, this is coming up for me.
Oh, okay.
Mine's working, they're doing it.
We're okay, we're, we're past the budget in, and that's all we had to do on the individual voting, so.
Okay.
We just do it as a group now unless we do come across an appropriation.
We'd have to record a vote for this one.
Yeah. Do we want to take a 10-minute recess and let them reset this? Want to move? Okay. We got a motion by Commissioner Mead, seconded by Commissioner Isobel. Do we have discussion?
Second, it's what I'm saying.
Yeah. His-
It's Commissioner, isn't it?
He's on now.
So it was.
Commissioner Mead, did you have discussion?
Yeah, I just, you know, we've been looking at this for a long time. It's a private act that we're modifying, that's been in place for a long, long time. If we, if we don't pass this, what we've decided is that any of our citizens that have simple possession of simple, small, commercial fireworks, our criminals need to be jailed for at least a minimum of 30 days, and possibly 11 months, 29 days in jail for possession of this stuff. It's, it's not being enforced. To me, the fact that it's just not being enforced is not a reason why we should leave it on the books. The fireworks is already being used by our people. It doesn't, the people that live in Oak Ridge, and I talked with the, with Mayor Gooch, the city being a, the form of city government they are, they can have more restrictive rules than we have, and that, so there, in Oak Ridge, things are not going to change very much. But it will no longer be a, it will no longer be a state crime under, under a private act for people to have simple possession. In Oak Ridge, the limitations are permanently on usage. And so I think unless you really believe that the average citizen is, has criminal intent and it can't be trusted to have simple commercial fireworks that are allowed in most of the country, I, I'm asking you to please support this.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I respect all the work that's been done by the fellow Commissioner Mead, and I understand the need from his perspective that there's a law on the books that may not be being implemented, but to me, that's up to the sheriff and Anderson County Sheriff's Department to make that decision. I, I'm not going to support this resolution. I've said it before and I'll say it again, I'm not in favor of endorsing any type of fireworks sales in Anderson County specifically, no matter how large or how small those fireworks are, to be shot off around Christmas, Christmas Eve. I just, I'm, I'm not in favor of that, and I feel like we're sending the wrong message if we pass this. I, I have not had one volunteer fire department member approach me and say, "Commissioner, I need you to approve this because this is a way we're going to generate revenue." I've not had one. So I'm, I'm not voting for it, and that's my comment. Thank you.
Commissioner Val.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to say exactly what Commissioner Wondell said. I know that Commissioner Mead puts a lot of effort and time into these issues that he's passionate about, and I respect that, I really do. But I also have had firefighters, fire chiefs in our area who not only don't support this, but have actually asked me to vote against it. And they understand where we're coming from, and they understand the issues of the enforceability and all that, but we've been talking about it for a while, as Commissioner Mead said, but the more it goes on, the more firefighters I talk to who don't want us to pass this. So I'll be a no vote on this as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mayor Frank.
I, I do understand the nuances of selling fireworks. We have been through this discussion multiple times, but I do want to point out what is going to stay on the books if you don't ratify this. If you want to go back and you want to make some changes, that's great. I don't have it in front of me, the older version, but there is a clause in there that is a shall confiscate. There is no due process. There is a, that is law. It's a private act. It is law that the, if Deputy Waddell goes out, that act says that he shall confiscate. And it doesn't, it's not may, it is shall, and shall means must. And there is a due process issue with what we have on the books. This was originally passed back when it was the Manhattan Project, and there were issues in Oak Ridge. But at the very least, I mean, we can go back and amend this or change it next year, but we really do need to fix what's on the books, at least in that regard. And, you know, we, we got this passed by the majority of commission, and it went down to Nashville, and I, I don't want to say shoulda, woulda, coulda, but if we would've maybe carved out some of those other things, and we can still put limits. I mean, what Jay put together for you all does give local control. It gives local control through the building office. They do have to comply. Also, they have to have their permit from the state of Tennessee. But we can tweak those things, but we really do need to clean up what is on the books. And that's not a problem for Mayor Frank, that's a problem for the Sheriff's Department. And it also says that anyone, and to Commissioner Mead's point, if, if you are a granny like myself, in my granny sweater, and I've got sparklers, I, I mean, it's a steep fine and punishable up to, what's the, 1129?
Yeah. Minimum 30 days in jail.
So, and the original intent, I mean, I'm not standing here saying that's just absolutely absurd, because when we put that in place as a county back in that time, it made sense. We were a national, you know, I mean, we still are national security, but we were, we were fighting a war, and Oak Ridge was the home of the Manhattan Project. So I would beg you, let's just clean at least that up, and there is nothing stopping us from going back and tweaking whatever can be tweaked at our local level, and if we need to do some more changes, let's amend it again, but at least let's get that shall and that due process issue off the books. And heck, I mean, if you want to sell, maybe you sell for six months, see how it goes. If it's a disaster, then you pull back on it. I mean, there is no reason that we can't pivot as a county. But at least we clear up those legal issues that now that we know, now that we've talked about it, now that we've been in operations and Legislative Committee and talked about those challenges, we at least get that cleaned up.
Yeah, Mayor, just because of something you just said, the sales part of this is only two 10-day periods a year.
Yes.
It's not something goes all the time.
Yep.
There's a, right during the winter holidays and during, just before the Fourth of July until the day after the Fourth, I think, but it's a 10-day period twice a year. And then it's pretty carefully regulated, not only by the state, but also by the county-
Yes, both.
-and our permitting process.
And when I was reviewing what Jay had put together, I also looked at some other counties, and you cannot get around, for any sale, you cannot get around the state. But then we have double layer, we have both state and local protection in this.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Denenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm certainly in favor of cleaning up the shells and the maize and that sort of thing. But I, I just, like Commissioner Wondell and Commissioner Val have stated, I just cannot see the need for allowing sales of fireworks. It's just not anything that I feel is a necessity, and I've just seen too much over my years of misuse of these types of explosions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Denenberg.
Welcome to put a 12-month sunset on it. We'll have to readdress that next year, but if you want to do a pilot project, that's available to you. We'll just put a 12-month expiration on it and see what happens, but that's an idea. I'm not recommending either way.
Commissioner Mead.
The thing that I'm concerned about is this, this, because the current law, which is a state law, requires that the fireworks shall be confiscated, what that also means is it shall be documented. And the same law provides for a minimum fine, I believe of $50, which back in 1947 was a lot of money. It's not that much now, really. But I'm kind of concerned about the minimum 30 days in jail. I expect that a judge could probably, I don't know if the state law says it's a minimum 30 days in jail. If someone has their sparklers confiscated, I think we're, we're legally required to go ahead and put them in jail for 30 days. I just think that this law is really too far, the way it was. There's a good reason why it hasn't been enforced, and it won't be enforced in the future probably either. But now that we've made it a public record at this meeting that this is a state law that says shall, that means we don't have any option but to do what the law says. The sheriff would be, would be basically violating his oath of office if he doesn't have his people enforce simple possession of fireworks. They don't even have to be lighting any. They only have to have possession under this law to get 30 days in jail and a fine. How you can be against getting rid of this, I, it's hard for me to imagine, except you just feel like, you know, you're the king and you're going to have the serfs do it the way you want.
Commissioner Scott.
Thank you very much. I don't feel like king or queen, but I'm not going to vote for this. One of the things that, you know, I think needs to be stressed are the animals that tend to just get mentally discombobulated when, you know, the fireworks are being shot off at the school every time the football team makes a touchdown. You know, when the Fourth of July fireworks were moved last year, my phone blew up because of the animals, whether it was over at Little Ponderosa, what are we going to do if the animals run loose, and the horses, and et cetera, et cetera. So, no, I'm, I'm not for this still. Thank you.
Other discussion? Let's go. Oh, Mayor Frank, sorry.
Just a little, just a correction, even under the prior law, you could for special public display, so if you have a Fourth of July celebration, or for instance, fireworks at the school, those have to be presented fireworks plans to the fire marshal, and those are allowable under the existing law. Just want to clarify that that's not part of this debate.
Thank you. Commissioner Smallridge.
Am I correct, there, there's some concerns about the current law in terms of the things that Commissioner Mead mentioned, the shall things, can, what do we need to do to, can we not address those without necessarily making the major changes that we're talking about right now?
No, it's a private act, Commissioner Smallridge, and it has to be amended. First of all, we had a two-thirds vote on the front end to send it down to Nashville to take care of these issues. Both the House and the Senate passed it. They sent it back to us for another two-thirds vote for ratification. So everything, we can't actually, the way it's written now, we can't amend it. Now, the new one gives us the right to adopt policies and procedures. You might get to a situation where you want to take care of these issues, these due process issues, the mayor brought up, and Commissioner Mead, but you decide you don't want to sell. Well, we have the opportunity to sell, but the county commission may put a moratorium on fireworks permits to sell. So you have that flexibility with the new version, you don't with the old. That's a very antiquated law. Again, it was written in 1947, when fireworks were certainly not as safe as they are now. And we're talking about Class C, consumer-grade, commercial-grade. We're not talking about Class B explosives or anything like that. These are all over-the-counter fireworks, nothing more than that.
Yeah. So if we pass this law, we can deal with the question that was thrown up over here-
The sales?
Well, the question about when you, you know, someone mentioned during Christmas. We don't want to, you know, sell them during Christmas or some other holiday.
Right. There's two periods in there. County Commission, the way it's written, can adopt rules and policies under this new one, it's more flexible. County Commission could put a moratorium on the sales of fireworks. They could just, at that point, vote, "We're not going to issue any permits during these days." But you understand, we cannot control people discharging fireworks in this county. It goes on all the time. They shoot, Saturday night, they were shooting them up near my house. So people are going to shoot fireworks at will, whether we pass this, change it at all. They, they do it all the time, they do it in Oak Ridge, where the law is much more severe. But I think one of the biggest benefits of the new version is the flexibility and taking out those concerns that the mayor brought about, about the shall word in there, confiscation, and giving us more flexibility to work, "Hey, we don't want to issue any permits at this point, we're going to put a moratorium on permits."
Commissioner Creasy.
Yeah, I'm a little, I'm a, just slightly confused over this. We're talking about state law, but-
It's a private act.
Private act?
Yes, sir.
That's where you have the 1129?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. It's not a, something we need to do in Nashville to get changed.
We have already.
We've already done that.
It was passed by the House and the Senate without a single nay vote and signed by the governor, but we still have to ratify it with a two-thirds vote.
It's not effective until ratification at the local body.
So how do we change it? You know, I'm not for the sale of fireworks myself, but I sort of feel like I'm with several others here that are not that eager to sell fireworks in the county, but how do we correct what the mayor is wanting us to correct?
You, you are by adopting this new version, the new version of the private act. If you decide you want a complete ban on selling, then we're going to have to go back and- then we're going to have to go back and send something through next time. Which, as you know, this is the third time we've addressed this issue at County Commission. We've actually had a private act passed at General Assembly two times that we didn't ratify. So I'd say their patience is thin on this issue. But what I was speaking about is we have the ability and the flexibility to say, we're going to issue a permit during this time or we're not. And I think County Commission, the way it's written, with the flexibility, the local rules and procedures that can be enacted. And that's what we've sent out to you months ago. You, you are adopting those. Those are not state law. But the state law, the private act that we've put together, gives you that enabling authority to do that. And you can make those changes. But if you're asking for a complete ban, then I think you would probably need to go back to the General Assembly because, and, and do that. Because the way it's written now, it gives us the opportunity, the availability to sell fireworks during two 10-day periods around the Fourth of July and New Year's Eve.
Got you. Thank you.
Ready to vote? Let's go to the board and vote. And this needs two-thirds for?
Yes, sir. Eleven.
Says I'm already logged in.
Well, how do you vote?
Yes.
That works, thank you.
Yes.
That locked up earlier is seven.
Nine, yes. Six, no. So motion fails.
Okay, I'll make the notification. Thank you. Just to, a couple of things here. I don't know if you've got the notification on this, but the mayor and I were notified by the school board. They no longer need the soccer fields at the jail. The new field, the new turf that they've put in at Clinton High School can have the varsity soccer and JV freshman games over there. We still have the youth soccer program out at the jail. So we'll need, that's always been under the Clinton High School Athletic Department. If you recall, that's who we've got the contract with, that we've done for, I guess, since '02. So we're, my point is, the athletic department's done all the controls over there, scheduling and everything, with the help of the sheriff's office has done the maintenance out there for years. We're going to need to put that facility under some entity of county government, either a department or a committee. And it probably, this is up to you, I'm not asking you to make this decision tonight because I've not addressed this committee about it. But we're probably going to need to look at the conservation board. They're more into the parks than any other entity that we have, unless the mayor wants that. But anyway, that's a scheduling concern. It's a lot going on there. It's coordination. There has to be lime and fertilizer and all that spread. So we'll have to put it under some entity. And I'll put this on the operations agenda next month. Somebody's going to have to do the scheduling. And all that's been handled under the Clinton High School Athletic Department for years. So we'll have to place it there, be thinking of any other committee or office that you'd like to see that put under. But, and again, Josh, I'm sorry for bringing that to the conservation board and throwing you in the fire there. But that's probably where it fits the best. But anyway, I'm glad we've got the new soccer facility for the high school. It's going to be great. One last thing I have is the delinquent tax sale. We did a great job of collecting the taxes. I have hats off to the ladies in my office. They worked that Oak Ridge and Norris list down to six parcels. And that's just staying on these people, physically posting the locations. I know they worked on one location down in Oak Ridge, a property that's worth about $400,000. They went down there three times. And a very strange piece of property. It's got a Corvette in the garage and just totally abandoned. But anyway, we only put five up for sale. And that's remarkable. As you recall, we've had many tax sales with 60 or 70. But we had five go to sale. I pulled one out of the 20 acres down in Oak Ridge, had an IRS lien that's set to expire. And so that'll be on our tax sale in the spring. So three sold and did quite well. If you saw that bidders list I sent out, we had bidders from all over the nation in here. But we're going to adjust that. We, our local bidders weren't satisfied with it. They didn't like it because of the competition. There was one mistake in the setup. The clerk of master, Mr. Cousins, wanted a 10-minute bidding period, and I'd agreed with that. But they reduced it to two minutes, which I think was an advantage to the people that had been using that auction site for years. And it was a disadvantage to our local people how to negotiate that. So we'll, there's a tutorial that a lot of them didn't bother to click. And we'll have to do a better job if we decide to move, stay on an online tax sale. There's a lot of advantages, but we saw some disadvantages of it too. But anyway, I wanted to report that to you. So three of the five properties sold. And we've got two that we didn't. And Mayor, I didn't enter a county bid on that. But I'll, I'll show you those two and see what you think about them. Any questions on the delinquent tax sale? That's all I have for you. I appreciate the opportunity. If there's anything I can do for you, please email, call. I'm around all the time.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I know Jay, he's going to deflect it, but I just want to say again, thanks for the resolution. I know he's had a lot on his plate as well. He's always working even when he shouldn't be. And I just want to say thank you for what you did and what you always do. And he always says, that's my job. And yes, he's correct, but I just want him to know. I appreciate it. Thank you, Jay.
I appreciate you, Commissioner Wondell. But I tell you, I love writing some of these resolutions. And Leo York was just a wonderful individual. I could have written three or four pages on this guy. He brought me a book tonight that shows two Indian barrel grounds on the Blockhouse Valley property that I knew of one, and I knew of the poor farm. And there's another one there near the Old Jake Butcher property that I never knew about, and they're registered. So he's just a wealth of information. If you ever get a chance to sit down with Leo, he's just a wonderful man. And if you love Anderson County history like I do, he's one of the sources that you need to speak to. But thank you for the kind words. Anything else I can help you with?
Mr. Chairman, just one more follow-up. The private act we sent to the state as it relates to nonpartisan elections for commissioners and constables was received. I got an email, shared it with you, and I know Commissioners got it as well. But what I, what I read from the executive director is Lieutenant Governor McNally and State Representative Reagan will have their legislative attorneys draft a legislation, and then it'll go through their process. And if it passes both houses, it'll come back to us. Don't expect it to pass, but, you know, you never can tell. So I just wanted to give an update on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mead.
Again, on that, I'm not sure what our, because this would affect the, a possible election in May. And so how much before that are we going to have to have, have this go into effect for it to, for the, for the primaries to already be set up?
Well, the way it is written is, it's effective as soon as the county commission passes a resolution. That would be the ratification resolution.
Yeah.
And as you know, the General Assembly takes up private acts at basically two periods of time. On the front end, usually the second or third week of January, and on the back end, the end of the session. So if you want it to apply to the May primaries, you would want to advocate for them to take it up on the front end and just let us know where they're at. And I think Mr. Stevens would appreciate that. He'll know whether or not he's got to prepare for a larger primary or not. But that's, that's usually the, the way it goes.
Okay. Yeah, I wish I could say I feel hopeful that it's going to get handled promptly.
Well, you got.
Based partly because of what we voted tonight, that once again, we have a private act that they go through the process and bring this act to us, and then we just turn it down.
The, doing the research on that, really the biggest issue that makes Anderson County so unique and is the fact the Hatch Act applies to so many people now in a partisan election. We've had tremendous members that have worked at DOE or their contractors for years, and TVA that have served on the county commission. It's just probably a dozen over time that I know of who have been fantastic commissioners.
Including me.
Including you.
I worked for the, for years.
And you think, I go back and think about some of these guys. Now those people in those shoes will be disqualified. They'll never be able to serve on county commission or any seat that's partisan.
Have we received the Attorney General opinion on that? I firmly requested that through John Reagan. Because he said he thought that contractors were not federal employees. They were federal contractors, and it wouldn't apply.
There's a section of the Hatch Act that talks about contractors that are fully funded by federal government, and their sole duties are to that particular job. It's a limited, but it actually, when you look at some of the contractors at Oak Ridge, they are fully funded by the federal government, and their sole job duties are to support the United States government. But that's the one unfortunate aspect, is the loss of all these county commissioners that have worked in federal jobs before will no longer be able to serve on county commission. Any questions about that or any other issue?
Commissioner Smallridge has a.
Yeah. Have our representatives indicated their position on the private act that Commissioner Wondell mentioned? And if so, or even, how much does their influence have on the vote, on the full House and the Senate when they vote?
A lot. On a private act or general law of local application, most all the other members will yield to the members that represent that area. So, and we all know Lieutenant Governor McNally, he, he's a great guy. He carries a lot of power down there. He's been there for, gee whiz, over 30 years, I believe. But anyway, when he's on board with something, he usually makes it work. And he's got a great history of carrying things like that for Anderson County. And so if Representative Reagan and Lieutenant Governor McNally are on board with this, then I think they can make it work. But that's up to them, and I don't want to speculate on that issue.
Any other questions for?
Thank you so much for, if you need anything else, just give me a shout. I'm around.
Thank you. We're ready for the operations committee report. Chairman Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Wondell made a motion to approve the resolution extending Anderson County's COVID-19 sick leave policy from October 1, 2021 to December 31, 2021. Commissioner Mead seconded the motion. Motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner Wondell. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner Wondell made a motion to approve the resolution authorizing Anderson County to join the state of Tennessee in the opioid abatement settlement draft form to obtain the law director's final approval, proceed on full commission for approval. Commissioner Mead seconded the motion. Motion passed unanimously.
Motion by Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner Scott. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the, all the action items for the operations committee.
Thank you, Chairman Isbell. New business. Commissioner Mead.
Yeah, this is something we hadn't talked about before, so I guess this is kind of new business. While I was at the County Commission Association Conference in Memphis, one of the things that was talked about is there's a, there's a bill going before the legislature in Tennessee right now that addresses the funding that goes for paying for the state to distribute sales tax. Okay, and I, I'm not going to go into all the detail, but basically this is how it works. Back when they first started this, they had a whole building of people. They had to handle all the paperwork to figure out the sales tax, bring in the sales tax, figure out where it all goes, and send out the money every month, okay? Now it's all done by a single computer, and I think there's one or two people that are involved and are not even full-time. And they press the button, and it forwards the money instantly to everybody's account each month. And so they are now, and they're still collecting, it's a three or four percent fee. Okay, and I can't remember for sure what that, what that percentage is. But what I do know, it ends up being millions and millions of dollars more than what it costs to do it. And so some of the commissioners from, from, actually from Knoxville, started this last year, and they got that number cut down a little bit. And now there's a bill this year to try to reduce it some more. Because it simply does not make sense, and it shouldn't be legal, that when they have a fee that is specifically designed to cover a cost, and it collects 10 times as much money as needed, that it should be allowed to stay the same. And it would mean that we, this county, would get tens of thousands, probably more, in, in, in taxes on a, on a regular basis instead of the amounts that we're getting now. And so I, I will get you the, I apologize, I left my house and I didn't bring the copy of that bill. But I will send out an email that just lets everybody know what the bill is.
We, I don't mean to interrupt you, but this county commission has passed a resolution. It's been several years requesting the same thing when it was first brought up. I think it's probably six or seven years ago. And asked them to reduce that fee. I think they knocked it down a couple of percentage points. We wanted the lead counties to start to recognize this. But it's still way too high for what the cost they have. And if you're interested, we can do another resolution, ask them to reduce that fee in support of the new legislation. We've actually written a resolution urging the General Assembly to reduce that handling.
I would make a motion that we do it again. And, and voice it as a full commission, not just individuals contacting our representatives and the committee chairs. This other place is important that we make sure they.
We see the House bill, Senate bill, on that note.
So it's a motion.
We got a, got a motion to, you want to refer that to a?
I would have, to have the law director write up something for us to do.
Resolution seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Commissioner Isbell, did you want to discuss this, or did you have a different?
Because we would have time now to get it before this commission, before they start their next session.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to commend the Clinton football team on their success that they've had this year. And their student athletes, especially the quarterback, the coach's son. I had the opportunity while working on that fence to be around those people. And, and he is a stellar individual. And with, you know, the things that I heard him talking about, the way he conducts himself, is good representation for Anderson County.
I think Clinton had the best record in the county.
Uh, now wait a minute. Who won district?
He did. Had the best record in the county.
Who won district, who went to the state?
Commissioner Wondell.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't want to take up much time, but I don't typically ask for these kinds of things. But I really appreciate the commission's prayers for a dear friend of our family. She's in hospice. She was one of the members on the Veterans Service Search Committee many years ago. Patricia Ann Breeding. She's from Mountain Blaine area. She probably won't be with us much longer, but I just can't thank her enough for what she did to help with our Veterans Service Officer. And just hope you all say a prayer for her tonight.
Thank you. Any old business? We'll stand adjourned. Hey, we're out of here by a little after 8:30.